Meeting will come to order. If you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, diversity, and justice for all.
Are the lights hooked into the?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I will first note that at five thirty this evening, the the board conducted a workshop. We're working on the process by which we evaluate the superintendent's performance. So we had that workshop at five thirty. We have had no one sign up to make public comments, so we'll move directly into the report of the secretary. I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'll second.
Jen, thank you. Any comments or questions? It was pretty thorough again.
Mm-hmm.
Lots of content.
Is it supposed to be, so in number four, I just wanna verify something. Page four, number four. It says, second sentence, if there is a crisis, will the ability see in every classroom, ability to know where the shut-off waters are? Is that what that's supposed to be?
I think that's supposed to be water shut-offs.
Water shut-off offs, yes, I think so too.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Um, also in number five, um, almost the third sentence, he stated this would be the first time we have every participated in this opportunity.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be ever, yeah, it's supposed to be ever.
We've ever, okay. And then in number five, uh, the second to last sentence, I don't know what completive means. I'm not sure what, I have a replacement though. Uh, competitive?
Competitive?
Competitive, that's what that's supposed to be, yes, instead of completive.
Yep.
Does he state that the program is very?
Competitive.
I think that's supposed to be competitive, I believe.
Yeah.
I think it probably should say admission to the program is very competitive.
It, okay, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, that probably is what it should say, yeah.
He stated that admission to the program is very competitive.
Hmm, yeah.
We covered a lot in that meeting.
Yeah, that was a big meeting.
Okay, anything else? In that case, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? That is four to nothing, thank you. That brings us to the report of the chair. Um, the only item I have on my report is a proposed list of meeting dates for the school board for next year. And as usual, we will do the first and third Wednesdays unless there's an intervening school vacation. Uh, but John, I believe there was one that you wanted to call to our attention in particular.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to uh, offer to the board that on February fifteenth, um, that is the National Superintendents Association's conference in San Antonio. I have never gone before, but there's a possibility that I I may go this year.
Nice.
Um, but so I didn't know if it was possible, if we could move that meeting to the eighth of February rather than the fifteenth.
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah, because the twenty-second will be school vacation week.
School vacation week, right.
Right.
So the question is eighth, uh, I guess.
Right.
That'd be okay.
Yep. So, please mark your calendars accordingly.
Okay, thank you for that. I was just thinking about this the other day, like.
Appreciate that.
Organizing things this year ahead of my.
This always feels overwhelming when you get this.
Yeah, but it's not.
Oh my gosh, you know.
Was that the only wonky one? Obviously, April break is, other than that, everything is always the first and third, pretty much, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
February and April, I mean, it really just April this year.
Okay.
Last year was a little bit different because of the way the dates fell, so it was like the school vacation was really late last year.
It was, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Great meeting on my birthday.
So very cool.
If I'd planned it that way.
Which one?
October nineteenth.
All right.
Awesome.
Gotta make a note of that.
Yep.
Yeah.
A happy day.
Get ready.
Okay, um, mark your calendars. That's it for the report of the chair, and that brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Uh, the first thing on my agenda this evening is the nomination of Brett Hogterp, um, as principal of Marshwood High School. Um, Brett, um, was the candidate we selected out of a pretty detailed process where we had about eighteen people involved, um, did a couple of rounds of interviews. Um, and so really excited, um, with what Brett brings to us, really kind of the big ideas being student-centered, really talking about that respect, accountability, um, but doing that in a way that's mindful of the students and where they are, and so really focusing on that. Um, and I I guess for me, one of the things that really struck me was was, um, the statement that he made of, you know, my mindset always needs to be the sunny seventy-five degrees. And I just thought that was a really good way to kind of encapsulate some of the work that we need to do and be able to, you know, really focus on the importance of communication, um, you know, engaging families, but also letting students know that they're, you know, what their responsibility in developing a climate and culture in a building is. Uh, he joins us, um, or the nominee, um, is currently the principal of Central High School, which is RSU sixty-four, which is located in Cornith. Uh, Brett also worked, um, at Old Town High School and as well as Levitt High School. So I bring you forward tonight, Brett drove down from Bangor to be at the meeting tonight as well.
It's a long drive.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, long haul. Just wanted to check one thing. Okay, um, next thing on my agenda is the update on summer projects, um, and I just kind of wanted to throw out an idea and I wanted to see how the board felt about this.
Yeah.
I would like to propose that on, um, August twenty-fourth, that if possible, we meet at four forty-five, have a bus, and we just take a trip to the five school buildings. Um, it's been a while since we've done that.
Yeah.
Um, some people may have never been into Central School, maybe have never been in Elliot Elementary School, but a chance to kind of see what the schools are, um, I, at that time, could share some of the projects that are being done. But just as, you know, kind of as a, we used to do it on a regular basis, but from facilities and finance, your position, we could do that and kind of look at the facilities and see kind of where we are at that point in time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Does that make sense to people?
Meeting, meeting here?
It does.
Meeting here at at four forty-five. We're hoping that Ryan will have his bus license at that point, so he can drive the bus to drive everybody around.
Yes. That will be fun.
Um, we're getting closer, um, so, um, uh, but that would just, I think it would be a great opportunity for all of you just to kind of see some of the work that that we're doing, what do the schools look like, and just kind of get a feel as to where we are.
The last time we got on a bus, it was to review COVID protocols.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Very well. And I was dying because it was about as hot as it is outside today.
Yes, it does.
You know, um, so, um, just to kind of give you a little bit of an update of where we are with our facilities work, um, we've had the roof at Elliot Elementary School repaired. Um, the window project at Marshwood Middle School, um, has been completed, and so we did the lower, uh, finished the lower downstairs. Part of that was the mold remediation, um, and so that was, um, there was not nearly the amount that we thought there would be behind the walls, which is a positive.
Ah, good.
Um, we did the upstairs as well, um, no problems upstairs, um, and so that was really positive, so we have new windows in that in that new section, so, um, that will really help. And just to remind everybody, I, um, about a week and a half ago, I had this mild anxiety attack and, you know, called the head coach, saying like, make sure those dehumidifiers are on, and so those are running constantly to make sure we're on top of
Mm, yes, that's right.
of the, um, of the moisture.
Yeah.
One of the things with the moisture, just to be aware, is that last year, because of COVID protocols, we had to have the system, the air HVAC system was running on full capacity twenty-four hours a day, and so that was bringing a lot of the humid air in, and so we've been able to back off on that, so that should have solved one of the issues, but, but just so you're aware of that.
Nice, yeah. Awesome.
Um, Marshall Great Works School, we are up for some paving, um, and I think that's gonna be in the next ten days or so, we'll we'll have all of that paved, um, which is really important because that's kind of at that point where we were with the high school last year, where we just wanted to get it paved before it costs us the extra money to remove the the pavement.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and then at Central School, we are still gonna be working on the HVAC system that is over at the gymnasium, um, that's a work that's that, um, Specialty Services will do for us, and so we'll be managing that shortly. Um, as you saw, um, Tony Bourbon did resign his position as facilities coordinator, um, so we posted for that position.
Yeah.
Um, we're looking at, um, kind of the expectations of that job. Um, one of the curveballs, and I'll get to it in a minute, is just the water testing is becoming a bigger and bigger issue that we just need to address, and so just want to kind of give people an update on that. Uh, but kind of in a nutshell, um, that's where we are with that. What I'd like to do is propose also is that in August, um, I'd love to be able to share with you some of the professional development things that we've done educationally over the summertime. We've done a lot of work this summer, talking about instruction, um, particularly with the math program, particularly with the kindergarten programs, and just want to be able to share that with the board as well, if that makes sense to everybody. Is that okay?
Yes, that's wonderful.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Um, number three is super easy. Um, if you need a new book, uh, they're not that new, they're, I think this is four or five, Elaine, this is this is version five, fifth edition.
Yeah, it's the fifth edition, yes.
So we have brand-new fifth editions for everybody, and if Rebecca needs one, but if anybody has lost theirs or needs another one.
Yep. I actually gave my fifth edition away to somebody.
Okay.
Might have been me. I don't know, I've got two.
Okay. So.
I'm pretty sure I have.
We have plenty, so if people need them, let us know.
That looks like mine. Nope, I I have that one, I think.
This is the Lakes.
That's, so that's just like a few years old, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
So just double-check, if you don't have the fifth edition, we have, we have an extra copy.
Fifth edition, yeah.
And then we'll also get a copy to Rebecca as well.
Great.
And I'm not sure Kate may, Kate may have been who you said who you gave your version to, but if Kate needs one, we'll get Kate one as well.
Oh, probably.
Yep. Yep. Twenty seventeen is the date on the book.
Yep. Uh, next thing is just, um, update on the water testing, and so there's kind of two separate trains that are running with the water testing. Um, there's kind of the the statewide lead testing, um, that has kind of got pushed back, and that state testing, you know, um, is now, the window's been extended into September. And so that's the testing that we kind of did preemptively to look at everything, to make sure that if there was a problem, let's get it addressed now. Um, so there were a couple of areas of concern for us, and so what we're doing with that, um, is that we're going into those areas, um, and putting new faucets in, uh, just to replace those faucets, because what it is, it's not the water coming into the building, it would be the pipes, if anything.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, there are a couple of, particularly in some of the older buildings, um, some of the the faucets that are older that we'll just shut down altogether, we just, we don't need them, they don't have the filters on, the kids really don't use them, so we'll shut those down as well. Um, but there's about, I believe Tony gave me the number of eighteen separate spots throughout the district where we're gonna put, um, maybe some point-of-service, um, filters on, um, to be able to handle that.
Yeah.
Nice.
We're also gonna, um, once we make those remediation projects complete, we're then gonna have, um, our consultants come in again and just test those eighteen areas one more time, just before school starts, to make sure we're all set when the, when the state testing comes, so before the kids get back, I want to have this put to bed.
Great.
Um, but it's getting bigger and bigger. The water stuff is is definitely becoming, you know, between the overboard discharge, between, um, you know, the lead testing, and now they also the PFAS testing.
Yeah.
Um, and so that becomes really into effect for us in December, but we recently had that done, um, at Marshwood, um, Middle School. Um, and so there was some issues with the PFAS in that, um, water system, and so that's a little bit easier to fix because that can be handled with a filter. Um, and so we're looking into filtration system before school starts at the middle school. Um, you know, the other schools that are on, um, on public water, we don't have to worry about that with, it's really the well waters we have to worry about.
Yep.
Um, so we'll get that taken care of, that, you know, it's it's easier to, typically, the harder to fix, it costs less money, the easier it is to fix, it costs more money, and so this is gonna be, you know, I'm not sure what the cost is gonna be for a filter for the, for a building, but we could be upwards of, you know, ten or fifteen thousand dollars to be able to do that.
The middle, the middle school.
Middle school, it's well water.
It's well water.
It's well water.
Yeah.
All four of the other buildings are.
This one's well water.
Oh.
Including this one.
This one's.
This one was tested as well for PFAS.
Yeah, we're fine. Yep.
Okay.
And nothing, no word or anything from the state as far as the PFAS, if they're?
That, they haven't tested that with us yet.
Okay.
And so that, that's gonna happen, so again, just trying to get, oh, like, we we have to do this.
But if they would cover any sort of mitigation with the PFAS, no?
No. I like the way you think, but no, the answer to that one is. So I just, I think the the big idea is, is that, you know, we want to be able to get it all squared away before we get kids back in the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So currently, um, you know, we've, um, brought in bottled water for the middle school, for the summer boost, and for the E S Y programming.
Yeah.
Um, and so that we've taken care of that, but just to kind of give you an update where that is, and so that's one of the things that we need to look at, um, because, you know, the more individual filters we add on, the more upkeep we're gonna have to do with that.
Yeah, they're right.
There's a cost to that.
It costs money, yeah.
And not only for the cost for the filters, but the cost of time to do that, and so we're looking at that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and I, and I don't think that that's gonna get any easier, that, and I'm gonna quote what Tony told me, but base, I'm gonna get the numbers wrong, but he was talking about like
Mm.
the difference in what they've done to kind of trigger a problem is like one trillionth of a of a s- particle, whatever that may be, which is basically like one second in a three-hundred-year period, or some, something crazy like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
I may have the numbers off a little bit, but but just such a minute difference.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so, um, I I feel good about where we are, it's gonna take some time, and fortunately, we have the the partnership with our environmental consultants that really have helped us through the the mold situation in Marshall Middle School.
That's right.
Um, and just using that right now, just to make sure we're all screwed before school starts, so.
That's good.
That's great.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, and that is the. Annabelle?
Yeah, we were scheduled not to give a.
You're a surprise, surprise listener, I.
Yeah. Um, I don't have anything really to say about Marshwood, um, I, the only interesting thing school-related that I have done is Deargo State, that was fun.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Riley and I, Riley St. Pierre and I, um, I didn't win governor, I said I was gonna run for it, like, all the way up into it, and then I was like, mm, as soon as I got there, there was this one girl who I was like, oh, she's gonna beat everyone at everything, so then she did. Um, and I was like, you know what, I'll just make her my friend. So Riley and I ended up in the Senate, um, it was really great, and then the Roe v. Wade decision got announced, and then I was like crying all day, and that was the last day of camp, too. So that was, um, it was a really good experience, and I am going to push that Riley and I have a big meeting with the current junior class about pushing it, 'cause it was not, like, really talked about to us.
Advertised, yeah.
It was one email to us.
What is it, can you clarify what exactly it is?
So it originally is called Boys and Girls State.
Okay.
Um, it's when, uh, it's kind of competitive, um, and you learn about local and state government.
Like a overnight?
Yeah, it used to be run through the American Legion.
A hurry.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and the the size of your legion kind of dictated the number of seats that you would get at at the, it's basically, it used to be like a week-long camp, or it's like governmental experience, where you create the government, you know, kids run for different offices, um, you know, you have different parties, and so.
Oh, cool. Oh, cool.
And, um, Maine is the first state to do it coed, and it was the first session of coed, so that was really cool.
Nice, oh, that's cool.
But, yep, and then they sent, I think they're at Nationals right now, they sent two girls and two boys to Boys and Girls Nationals, so.
Good conversation, yes.
Nice.
Yeah.
Wow. It was for a week.
Yep.
Yeah, and you heard about it.
Imagine when they under-under that?
From an email.
Or an email, and yeah, so what do you think you would, you would do to to sort the word a little bit better?
Yeah. Why did I wait to that?
Right.
Well, Riley and I took a whole bunch of pictures, um, with our friends, we took a lot of videos, there was a talent show, Riley's town won the talent show, it was hilarious.
Yeah. Right.
That's awesome. Oh my god.
But, yeah, so we're gonna put together a little presentation and then show it to the junior class as a way of getting more kids to apply, 'cause we were the only two who applied.
Yeah.
Uh, and they only sent two, so.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Nice.
Good for you.
Awesome.
So one of the things that I think Heather and I had a conversation about, and and I think we, you know, I think we would all be in agreement, I I would like to sit down with both student reps with, um, the principal of Marshwood High School, and just kind of talk about targeting the reporting that we do, and I think really talking about some of the building goals, you know, I think the civility is something that we've talked a lot about, and really trying to, I I I think it's always great to get the, kind of the the student athletics, you know, club stuff, but I think that really should be secondary to really the big idea of what's happening with the students.
Yeah.
And so I think sitting down and really maybe saying, maybe we do that once a month, and and then one day a month, we're gonna talk about this issue, and we're gonna focus on these issues, and just kind of think about those three big building goals, and and I'll, you know, I will share some district goals that I I have in my mind, you know, obviously, the civility being the largest of them, sure, um, going in, but I think really trying to tailor that a little bit more specifically around
Mm-hmm.
the student experience at Marshwood High School, 'cause that really is an opportunity for student voice for us to hear that.
Love that.
So, yes.
Love that.
So.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Perfect.
And so that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Great.
Correspondence, we've had none, on which to report. Committees, uh, none of our three committees has met since our last meeting. Next meeting of finance facilities will be prior to our August twenty-fourth meeting. Next ed policy will be September twenty-eighth, and the next wellness and S E L committee is still a date to be announced.
May I?
Please.
Um, so the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, there are two things that I'd like to add to the agenda regarding ed policy. Um, one of them is, um, when we met back in May, we talked a little bit about, um, the, um, remote participation policy.
Yes.
And I think we wanted to put that on the agenda to have a conversation with the board around where people work, and the pluses and minuses, and kind of finding out the landscape as to where the board was with things, because it is, it is a little bit of a
Sure.
a yin and a yang, I think is the best way to say that.
Yep, yep, for sure, yep.
So that would be part of that, and then also, I I'd like to be able to, um, it would be a very brief presentation, or I'll share the link with you, but, um, the search engine is ninety-nine point nine-nine percent done, where you can look up a keyword online and be able to search a keyword and get a listing of all the policies.
Oh, cool.
The policy of all the policies.
So I just want to be able to have that
Game changer, yes.
presented, so Elaine, if you could add those three things, just as we start to build that agenda.
For the twenty-fourth?
For the twenty-fourth, so so one would be, um, talking about the remote participation for board members, which is kind of tied to community members as well.
Remote, yeah.
Yep.
The, um, presentation of the search engine for the policies online.
Yep, that's great.
Um, and then also talking about, um, some of the academic work that we've done over the summertime as we, professional development, as we prepare for the school year.
Okay. Perfect, and our field trip. So that's kind of four, four big ideas as we go into the next meeting.
Right.
Great.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
No, that's, don't, don't apologize, that's great, thank you.
Would we expect that the wellness is tip, wellness?
Should be the first.
Should be the seventh of September.
Correct.
I believe, I'm happy to reach out to
Okay.
Naina, just to make sure that that.
Yeah, I I'll, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take care of that. Very good. That concludes the report of the committees and brings us to new business. May I have an, a motion, please, to nominate Andrea Beniskevich?
Beniskevich.
Beniskevich, thank you, Beniskevich.
Yep.
I move to nominate Andrea Beniskevich.
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 Uh, first-year probationary I E P coordinator, master's, step seventeen, eighty-one thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars per year, school year twenty-two to twenty-three.
I'll second, Jen.
Jen, thank you. John?
So this is one of those critical positions as we go into next year, and so the 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 big idea is this, is that, um, our principals spend an incredible amount of time in I E P T meetings, um, particularly at our elementary schools, and so our, our middle school and in, um, high school have the ability to kind of share that, um,
Yep.
really that process, um, with with two people, or in the high school, three people. Um, and so this gives, um, the buildings an opportunity to have someone who would come in once a week. And let's just say, for instance, at Marshwood, you know, Great Works School, they would be there on Mondays and be able to facilitate those meetings that are I E P T meetings, and then, now that doesn't mean that the principal necessarily wouldn't go, but it also allows, you know, the the big idea is I I want to have our principals in the classrooms more, that's the big idea, right?
Yep.
And so sometimes the duties start to become more important, and and you lose sight of the big picture, and the most important thing is is how kids are doing academically, and so this is all part of that, and so Andrea has had a similar position, it's in Oyster River, um, and, you know, really comes as highly, highly qualified, um, you know, uh, so this is a really great thing for us. In addition, one of the tricky parts about this position is when we posted it, we needed someone certified in Maine and someone certified in New Hampshire.
Right.
Uh, because part of this position would be paid for with our agreement with Rollinsford to be able to do all of the Rollinsford meetings, and so we would now be be the local L E A for those meetings.
Yep.
Um, and so that, that's part of this, and so ideally, what we would do is we would have, you know, one day at Great Works School, one day at, at Marshwood, uh, excuse me, Central School, one day at Elliot, um, and then one day kind of at the middle school slash high school to do the Rollinsford meetings, and then on that, kind of that fifth day, to be that kind of catch-all day, that if if we needed to meet, if, you know, part of this is gonna be also meeting with the special education director from Rollinsford to be able to coordinate these meetings and things like that, so.
Yep.
That's great.
Just, it's it's a, it's a big position, and it's a little bit outside the box, I want to be really clear, this is a, this is a teacher contract, this is not an administrative position, this is someone who's coming in to facilitate meetings.
Yep.
Um, obviously, they're gonna be given the ability to, um, dispense, um, finances to be able to meet the needs of an I E P decision, um, but it it is not an administrative position, so.
Okay.
Comments or questions? All in favor? That's four oh. Very good. May I have a motion, please, with regard to the nomination of Richard Moore?
I nominate Richard Moore, first-year probationary E L A, Marshwood Middle School, master's seventeen, eighty-one thousand, three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars, school year twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Lisa, thank you. Sure.
So, um, for those keeping track of the rosters, okay? This position was opened up when, uh, Kristen Lamato, um, we applied for a transfer to come back to Marshwood High School. Kristen was hired as a special, uh, excuse me, a social science teacher originally. Um, that position was cut, and that's when she be, um, came into the gifted and talented position.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so now she's returning to Marshwood High School, um, to be a social science teacher, which, which I think is is a win for everybody. Um, Richard is joining us from Spalding High School, where he currently teaches. Um, he's also had some experience in Buffalo, New York, at the Buffalo Public Schools. He's been in the role as a special education teacher and also taught at the middle school, um, in Lisbon, Maine, so really kind of a vast amount of experience. Um, he is a person, um, by happenstance, who lives in Elliot as well, um, and so came in and really just did a wonderful job with the interview committee at the, at the middle school.
Great.
Okay.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Sorry, I thought you were raising your hand to comment.
No, I'm ready to vote.
That's four oh, thank you. Have a, a motion, please, to nominate Ariel Soleil.
I, uh, nominate, um, Ariel Soleil, first-year probationary physical science, Marshwood High School, uh, master's step four, fifty-three thousand, four hundred, three dollars, uh, school year twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Would anybody like a second?
I'm sorry, second, sorry.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was reading.
So Ariel, uh, comes with us with a really diverse background. Um, she is currently, uh, this past, um, year worked at Noble High School, also had an opportunity in Yarmouth, where they didn't, the position didn't go full-time, and so um, just, you know, obviously moved to a full-time position. Um, I'm really excited because this is the position where we were talking about kind of reducing those class sizes and how we're gonna evolve the science department.
Yeah.
Um, and so what I'm really excited about is that Ariel has also had some great experience working with some of the students who have some different pathways at Noble High School, and so I think one of those things that we want to think about in the future is how do we create those alternative pathways within this building, so she's had some great, um, experience with that in the past, and so, um, just a really nice, um, way to kind of start to, you know, get some expertise in that area, if that's the decision that we decided to go forward with, so, um, looking forward to it.
Comments or questions? All in favor? That's four oh, thank you. Motion, please, with regard to Anthony Thompson.
I move to nominate Anthony J. Thompson, first-year probationary special education, Elliot Elementary School, B A O one, um, forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-three, school year twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second, Lisa.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you.
All right, and so this is another one of the shuffling positions that we had, um, we had a teacher who left, um, Elliot Elementary School to take a position at Marshall Great Works School, and so that opened up a position at Elliot Elementary School. Um, and that was, um, Allison Chase's resignation that we talked about in June.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so Anthony has been, um, an ed tech at Marshall High School, um, he's got a bachelor's degree from Sonoma State University in California. Um, really, at the high school, is one of those people who just really stepped up in any need that you had, he he was there to do it. He was involved with our unified basketball team, approached that with great enthusiasm, um, he was really instrumental when we had um, kind of our special Olympics celebration here, Anthony was one of the people that was really involved with it, and also did a wonderful job with our summer school program. Um, and so, um, this will be his first teaching job, um, and so he has a fantastic mentor, um, with Diana Fallon, who is a teacher at Elliot Elementary School, who is a master special education teacher, so he will have the perfect person to be working with.
Um, and so really excited for Anthony, he's an enthusiastic young man, I think will, you know, grow into the position well.
Excellent.
That's so exciting. Do you think that he's interested in continuing on some of those other awesome roles that he's played?
I hope so, I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so, too.
I mean, those, those are, I'd love to see some, some of those expand a little bit, too, so.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Is, is, is he certified, or is he working at all four, is that?
No, he, he, um, has some certifications in place right now, you know, so it may, it's conditional, um, but, you know, it's still, it's some work that has to be done still, but, you know.
Right, right, so when you mentioned mentorship, is that a district-wide policy, or is it for the all-four certification?
No, more for
Mentorship.
Diana, what's a tight ship? It's good.
Yeah, I love seeing teachers coming in to the district, that's just very exciting.
And this is his first year teaching.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he will also, um, he'll also get a mentor from our, our P L C S S program as well, which I'm not sure who that may be at this point in time, but, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Other comments or questions? All in favor? That's four oh, thank you. I have a motion, please, with regard to Michelle Moynihan.
I'm gonna do it. I move to nominate Michelle Moyni- Elle Moynihan, first year probationary, reading, Elliott Elementary School, B A seventeen, prorate point-six F T Es, forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents, school year twenty-two to twenty-three.
And is there a second?
Second, Heather.
Thank you, Heather. Go ahead, John. So Michelle, um, is joining us from M S eighty-sixty, um, where she's been, um, serving in the role, um, as an interventionist. She also during the pandemic served as a remote, uh, kindergarten teacher, had a, a bunch of experience. Um, this is that point-six position to give some more reading assistance at Elliott Elementary School. Um, and so what we're gonna do with this position is actually, um, kind of put this with that sixteen-hour ed tech intervention position. Um, and so she'll be in the building every day, but it'll be kind of two separate roles, um, and kind of pay the two different rates. But, um, you know, really looking forward to having that, another level of expertise. Um, you know, we've done a lot of work over the summertime, particularly around the area of kindergarten, kind of starting and reviewing kind of what, you know, literally what we expect from all kindergartners. I think, you know, Michelle's gonna be a great asset in that building to be able to help move kids forward.
Awesome. Is she playing both roles?
She'll, she'll do both, so it's a point, it's a point, point-six teacher, so
She's doing both. Yeah.
In theory, three days a week teaching, and then two days a week as the, um, ed tech, and really the ed tech, the whole idea around that is, is the, uh, flexible grouping piece, where we can work with smaller groups to be able to give the kids more individualized attention. Look, that's, you know, we put two sixteen-hour positions in each of the elementary schools, um, but we're able to do that, so.
And it sounds like we attracted her back, she was in Elliott, Elliott Elementary School back in nineteen ninety-seven?
Yeah, a while ago, yeah, and, and was, liberated in Elliott as well, so, as the students have gone through the district as well, so.
Wow, that's great.
Very cool.
Yep.
Great.
Other questions or comments? All in favor? Four oh. Thank you. May I have a nomination, or a motion, please, with regard to nominating our new high school principal?
I nominate Brett Hookter, principal, Marshwood High School, one thousand, two hundred and twenty, one thousand, excuse me, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, prorated to start date to be determined.
I'll second.
Heather, thank you. John?
Um, so as I stated earlier, um, just coming to us with a great deal of experience, um, I really think for Marshwood High School, um, you know, Brett's gonna be a calming influence to settle some waters that are coming through the pandemic, um, and really kind of recommit to our values as to who we are as a school community. Um, and also be a great listener and a great communicator with our families to really find ways to engage people back into our schools again, so.
Andy drove down here.
Andy drove down, Andy drove down.
How do you pronounce your last name?
So it's always been a challenge, but if you think of the word hood
Okay.
It's O D, but you put a G on it, Hogter.
Hogter.
Hogter, okay.
Hogter.
Got it, so I messed that up, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I suspect that it might be Dutch. Good. Any other comments or questions? The moment has arrived, all in favor? Four oh, welcome.
It's official. Yahoo, congrats, so happy to have you.
So one of the things, um, that we'll work out is that Brett's still under contract, um, with R S U sixty-four, and so there's a timing that we have to work through, um, and what we've decided to do is that if there's days that he can come down, then we'll, we'll work that out financially, and, you know, that may be like a per diem basis, but if he can come down a couple of days, you know, this week, so. So what are the big things right now? The big things are, A, getting school open is kind of a big deal. Um, B, we need to hire a new assistant principal.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so Brett's gonna come down and be a part of that process tomorrow, um, after he signs his contract, we'll, um, give him access to school spring so he can kind of go through the applicants, we have the committee that's ready to go, um, but we have to kind of speed along because we need to opposition in theory by the end of July, because those people may have a thirty-day waiting period as well. So we just wanna be on top of it as best we can, so there's some things we'll work on.
If I may ask, what is the end date of your contract up north?
It's a thirty day, so I have resigned pending this meeting.
Got it.
Which will start tomorrow, which takes me to the twentieth of August.
Got it.
She's gonna try to release me earlier.
Okay.
But in my contract, I, you don't have real obligations for the next two weeks by contract, so I can come down and work a couple of days to be a principal again.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
So he, as, is it, it's kind of a different, it's similar to how Noble handled their contracts, is they have a, take a two hundred and twenty or two hundred and twenty-five day contract with no vacation time.
Yep.
And so you work X number of days, um, and so once you've met that number of days, then you've completed your contract. So it's just, it's a little bit different approach, different than, than how we do it, so.
Got it.
Okay.
Um, so we'll work it out. Our hope is, is that, um, when we have our administrative retreat on the sixteenth, we're gonna save a seat for him, he'll be there. That, that's, that's our, that's our big hope, so, all right.
Yes.
I'm anxious to get started and anxious to find a potion from a place for under two thousand.
Okay.
We can help with the first one, you might be on the lock on the second one.
Two thousand a day.
Crazy.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please, to approve a Great Works P T O fundraiser?
I move to approve the Great, uh, Marshwood Great Works P T O fundraiser, Great Toboggan Race, who will be held in the winter of twenty twenty-three between January and March, depending on snow conditions, uh, to support, uh, Marshwood Great Works students.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. Eager to hear about this one, this sounds great.
Yeah, that is good.